Okay, we're going to call this meeting into order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, sorry. Okay, roll call.
Let's start on Madison, position one.
Chip Bradley, position two.
Sergio Martinez, position three.
Phoebe Skinner, position four. Valerie McIlroy, position five.
Okay, staff in attendance. We have Administrator Fritz, Chief White, I don't remember your title, but I'm on. Administrator Bill. Sorry about that. Is it Pliny? Assistant there? Okay, sorry about that. All right, cool. First up, we are going to talk with Beacon Broadband, and I believe Brent is online, and Paul. Sir, if you would come up here.
All right.
And we have to use our gymnasium voice because we don't have any projection in there.
Perfect. I believe Mr. Bishop is going to go first, though.
Okay.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Great. Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to come and address the Gold Beach City Council. Appreciate the invitation and look forward to sharing with you just a little bit about the history of Beacon Broadband. Since we haven't addressed the Gold Beach City Council previously, I'm going to just give a thumbnail sketch of the history of our project. And then, once we get to the inception of the project, I'll turn it over to Beacon Broadband's General Manager, Paul Rekonzon, to tell you, give an update as to where we are today. Again, I've elected to introduce myself, I'm Brent Bishop, and the General Manager and CEO of Kuzco Electric Cooperative. So, in 2018, Kuzco Electric Board of Directors were seeing nationally through our National Electric Cooperative Association that there were many, you know, as many as 15% of electric cooperatives across the country were getting into broadband and serving their electric cooperative, the rural membership, some sort of broadband services. And the reason was is because it was found that they were actually being the provider of last resort to broadband to rural America. We already serve rural America electricity, we have been doing that for eight years as electric cooperatives. And so, we, and so we, and so we, I'm sorry, apologies for your interruption there. So, the Board of Directors of Kuzco Electric looked into it and wondered what this looked like here in Kuz and Kri counties. So, they signed up a grant from Business Oregon to do a feasibility study engaged with the National Rural Telecom Cooperative in order to accomplish that, and found out that based on their analysis, it would be a feasible project. And so then we proceeded to work with an agency to do a member survey and find out what the need was here in our local service territory. And there we found out that the majority of our membership actually has access to some sort of broadband, but as many as 60% were likely or very likely to switch to a product that would be affordable and reliable broadband service if our local electric cooperative were to provide that. So, then we moved into 2019, and we continued benchmarking. One of our neighboring electric cooperative in Douglas County, they have a very successful broadband subsidiary that was passed out, and they've been in operation for more than a decade now, and have actually grown beyond the size of the electric cooperative, number of customers, and the service territory that they serve. So, as we did benchmarking and we continued to do additional action with our membership to assess need in our area, we met another agency, Conexon, who works solely with electric cooperatives across the nation to help them deploy broadband, and we soon engaged with them to do a second feasibility study. This particular study was for a system that was entirely 100% fiber broadband service to all Kuzco Electric members who would be interested in the service. So, as we wrapped up 2019, we left the year with a number of questions that we needed to answer. Do we, if we created broadband subsidiary, do we only serve Kuzco Electric members, or do we reach outside of some of our neighboring areas like the city of Powers, or like some of east of Kuz Bay in Kuz County adjacent to our service territory up there? What sort of a system design would we have? Would it be 100% fiber to the home, or would we provide fixed wireless service, a lesser service in some areas where it's more rural and fiber in the more densely populated areas? What kind of a business structure would a broadband subsidiary be? Where would we get financing to accomplish the project, and what grant funding would be available? And what was the competitive environment, what would that look like for us, particularly as electric, who operates in a non-competitive marketplace? So, as we began to answer these questions, we identified a number of risks and rewards, benefits and rewards, as well as risks and uncertainties. And, you know, many of the benefits of broadband today, and high-quality broadband, are apparent. But we recognized that if we built a broadband network, that it would be a local asset, that it would be service provided by a local provider, and that it would be under local control, and it would be an asset owned by our electric cooperative members. Naturally, with broadband and good quality broadband, there's economic, educational, and social benefits that we would realize. But in addition to that, Kuzco Electric, in order to continue to deploy new technologies, you know, we hear about that term, the Internet of Things, well, that's real in the electric distribution industry today, but we would need to be able to connect our substations and have a high-quality, high-reliability communication system to do that, would cost millions of dollars. If we paired up with a broadband subsidiary, then there would be that tremendous benefit to the electric co-op. If we did this, we would be bringing millions of dollars of grant funding into the local economy, and also, we had the benefit of the electric cooperative community support, cooperation among cooperatives that we enjoy in our statewide, in our national association, and those other electric co-ops who have gained a lot of experience already in the broadband industry. Naturally, some of the risks and uncertainties, it would be a large capital investment in a competitive marketplace with business environment uncertainties that we even couldn't have imagined at that point in time when we were pre-COVID. And we needed to also, we had the risk of validating some of the key assumptions in our business plan, like take rate and construction costs. So, we spent 2020 developing a business plan for the project, and that included 100% fiber premises. We would serve every single Kuzco Electric cooperative member who wanted fiber broadband service, we would provide that and make it available. That was for those in town, as well as those for, almost rural areas. And we developed a detailed financial model, we did market analysis, we did funding analysis, and we identified a number of business partners that would help us, folks that would help us get discounts on materials, folks that would help us with, companies that would help us with design and construction and so forth. Kuzco Electric Board of Directors approved that business plan in June of 2020, and then we also registered Beacon Broadband Incorporated as a legal entity with the state of Oregon about that time. We did that so we could participate in a grant funding opportunity through our Communications Commission called the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. We anticipated that there was as much as $32 million available in our service territory As that opportunity played out, in the month of October, Kuzco Electric and Beacon Broadband were awarded $14.1 million of subsidiary, federal subsidiary grant funding to help us with the project. And at that point in time, the Kuzco Electric Board of Directors authorized the Beacon Broadband project. And so that is kind of from inception to Beacon Broadband being an authorized project by the Kuzco Electric Board. And at that point, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Paul Rekonzon to give you an update as to a little bit how we've come to where we are today.
Yeah, I'm Paul Rekonzon, General Manager of Beacon Broadband, and I'm sure grateful to be here. Thank you for the invitation. And I have four basic bullet points. The first one is, what the heck are we, why aren't we here in Gold Beach yet? That's the first one. And I'm sorry, we're not here in Gold Beach yet. We started building, we have to build from our hub sites, our points of presence, and so we have two points of presence, one up by Kokil and one down in Brookings. And we started with the one down in Brookings, and we've been building that, and we've been running into construction delays and material delivery delays, and so on, and so on, and so on. And it breaks my heart, but we are working on it. We are at a point in Gold Beach where the design is completely finished for the city of Gold Beach. We are ready, as soon as we can get all of our stuff together, we're ready to start building it. We do have to get up through Pistol River first so we can connect you to that hub site in Brookings, but we're working towards that. It is time for us now to start negotiating a franchise agreement with the city, and so I'll be reaching out to schedule that at your convenience. We're not in a desperate hurry to get it done yet, but it's time that we start up getting our franchise agreement in place. And we are, we have taken over a little corner of Gold Beach and made it our warehouse. And if I could give these to you, Mayor? These are invitations to an open house that we're having at that warehouse, if you could share those with your council. We will be holding an open house, and I don't have enough for everyone in the audience, but I'll leave these back in the back if you're at all interested in seeing what we're doing with that warehouse that we've built over there. So, those are three of my four points. The fourth point that I would like to share with you all is, I'm looking over here at this whiteboard with page 170 on it, and I'm only imagining what that is. I'm guessing that it is a priority list of some sort for things that the city would like to do. And I like to imagine in my head that below the blue line, those are things that have been added, not things that are below the line, that it's a growing list. And I would like to share with you that we're here to help you check off four of those things right now. We are building resilient broadband. When Beacon Broadband comes into Gold Beach, not the day that we get here, but as we build the network, we will be connecting to those two points of presence, and we will have a backhaul from separate providers that are path diverse. So, if we lose our hub to the south, you're okay, your traffic will go out the north. If we lose our hub to the north, you're okay, your traffic will go out the south. And so we'll have that resiliency in there. We will be coming again, and City Manager, I'll be coming to you for this as well. We're in the process right now of doing a broadband resiliency grant for Middle Mile, and so if we could have, if we could have your priority listed as one of the reasons why we're doing it, that'd be bonus points for us. Number 20, incent broadband affordability. Beacon Broadband is probably not going to be the very cheapest way to get broadband service. We're building a fiber-to-the-premises network, but we are going to have a program, we're going to participate in the Affordable Care Program that the federal government offers right now. The Affordable Care Program offers a $30 subsidy for qualifying households, and we will have, for those qualifying households, we will have a product at 100 megabits over 100 megabits per second that costs $30. And so fundamentally, for qualifying households, the Beacon Broadband 100 over 100 product will be free. I don't think there's a more affordable model than that. But again, for our normal products, for households that don't qualify, we won't be the cheapest, and we're grateful that for some members of the city of Gold Beach in the outlying areas, there's competition, and you can select someone else if that's what you need to do. Then, we're going to be helping with number 21 and 25, cybersecurity and mobility services, because Beacon Broadband is here. We're a local service provider, we care about the region, we care about the people here, and we don't want to be just a commodity broadband provider, where we put a line to your house and say, "Send me your monthly checks," and that's all you get from me. We're here to participate with the community, to help the community take better advantage of the broadband that we are building. We want people to understand cybersecurity better, and for that purpose, we provide with every single one of our services a GigAspire with a product called Protect IQ that actually prevents invasive traffic from coming into your home. And so we are very interested in cybersecurity. With the new mobility services, one of the things that we are reaching out to cellular providers for is with the density of fiber that we're going to have, we have a model where we are hoping to be able to put small cell sites up to be able to start closing some of the holes in cellular service that are all up and down the South Coast. And so we're working on those objectives as well. I feel a little bit like I've just done a commercial, and I apologize if anybody else feels like I'm up here advertising our services. I'm not trying to do that. What I'm trying to do is share with you the enthusiasm that we have at Beacon Broadband for the product that we're engaged in, for the project that we're engaged in, for the benefits that it can bring to the South Coast of Oregon. And we are excited about the fact that we're here, and we're going to be reaching out where no one else will go, but we're also excited for the fact that Charter is making some improvements to their network, and Ziploc continues to make improvements on their network as well. Those efforts, coupled with ours, will make the South Coast of Oregon one of the most connected places in the United States of America. And that's something we would not have been able to say, that's something we cannot say today, but that's something that we will be able to say as the three companies finish their projects. Can Mr. Bishop and I entertain any questions?
Do you also have any questions?
I would just like to say thank you for projecting, and the way that he spoke, that's how we need to thank you.
You need the voice, thank you.
I'm glad to set the example. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, we appreciate you both.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, next up is a Mayor's Propulation Proclamation on Canvas Primary Election Votes. Whereas, where the, I changed glasses, sorry. Whereas Resolution R. 2122-08, a resolution of the city of Gold Beach to submit the voters, I have to read this whole thing. Of city measure concerning seven-year capital projects local option levy for fire capital equipment was enacted on February 7, 2022, and whereas the proposed local option levy was placed on May 17, 2022, and the ballot measure 8-104, and whereas pursuant to Section City Code, Section 1.210, subsection 7, subsection A, the mayor shall issue a proclamation on the ballot measure results immediately following the election. And whereas the May 17, 2022 election results for ballot measure 8-104, as certified by, to the city, by the Curry County Elections Division, were a decimal 716 votes were cast regarding ballot measure 8-104. 336 voters are in favor of the measure, and 350 votes were not in favor of the measure. Based on the official canvas, canvas of the votes provided by the Curry County Elections Division attached to this proclamation, I, Tammy Hoffman, Mayor of the city of Gold Beach, proclaimed the following. The voters of the city of Gold Beach did not approve ballot measure 8-104, a seven-year capital projects local option fire equipment levy on May 17, 2022, primary election. That was hard to read. I don't know if anybody else noticed, but it actually passed in precinct 10, but not 11. So I guess if the fire trucks have an option, then she goes south, but, or, that was done. Okay. With that, we move into, I think, the depression discussion. Okay, so, a makeshift temporary campground. Is there anybody here from the Homeless Coalition? Thank you. So, I'm going to read some of what I wrote, I think Olivia read it, I don't know what the people in the audience have, but we definitely do have a homeless issue. It's worse than it was 10 years ago, in my opinion, and the laws and the legal interpretations have changed. In the recent past, I've had Boise, Martin versus the city of Boise, we've had the case in Grants Pass, and then just recently, the state passed two new laws that we've got to deal with. I'm getting frequent calls and complaints about the visibility of people that are unhoused, behaviors, messes, trash, and they want me to fix it. I mean, don't we have vacancy laws? And why aren't we fixing this? Well, we don't have vacancy laws anymore. We don't have the ability to manage the issue like we used to, and I don't even know how we used to do it because people just weren't visible, in my experience. So it's different than it was. And I've been talking in work groups for quite a few years now, and I started back in 2014, I did the tour with the League of Oregon Cities, I believe it was 2014, and I remember seeing the campground that they built first in Eugene, and now they've expanded into three or four different iterations. Road retreat in Medford, they just finished one in Roseburg, and Old Oak Village by the Deveraux Center is the closest one to us in Kuz Bay. Or is that North Bend? Kuz Bay, okay. So, I don't know if we're open to that kind of a concept, maybe some sort of a basic urban campground, but the biggest thing is, I, as a mayor, don't want to put a lot of effort into something if the council's not in favor, and I do want to put effort into something if the council is in favor. And I do not want to do what happened in Brookings where Mayor Jave got ahead of his council, and then he ended up resigning as a result, and I think that was very tragic in my mind. So I don't want to get ahead of you, I want to do what you want me to do, and support what you want me to support, and take that direction as a leader. A couple of things that I've learned in my research is it only works if there's a social service support, and they have to be operated by a nonprofit, they can't be operated by a government entity. And the reason for that is because of constitutional rights when it's owned by a public entity. So, for example, Oasis Shelter Home is a nonprofit, if somebody doesn't follow the rules, they're a guest, they can be asked to leave immediately. If that were a city-owned facility, it would be, okay, you'll have to go, okay, I appeal. Well, now six weeks later, we go through the appeals process, and then the person goes. When you have an immediate problem, you have to be able to take care of it right away. So that's why it can't be owned and operated by a city, or county, or another government entity. It's very important civics education that I got, and so I'm sharing that with you guys. The other question is, do we want to fund it in any way? If we do fund it in any way, whether we provide property, or we use our ERPA funds, or we use any resources at all that belongs to the city, we could put rules with it. We could say, "We will give you this money, but you have to do this." If we don't provide any help for it, then we can't have any real say in what happens or doesn't happen. So, I have five questions. Does the council want to try to find some city-owned property to start a project like this? If there's no property suitable, do we want to consider using ERPA funds to purchase a piece of property? Would the council be willing to consider donating water and sewer to a project like this? Would the council be willing to allow me, or jointly with me, to write letters of support? And would the council be willing to do a makeshift campground in the meantime? And we do have somebody from the Homeless Coalition that would like to speak, and Stephanie Hadley would like to speak if we can give them permission to do that. Am I a co-host now?
Yes.
Oh, so I can do that. So, you want to start, or you want Stephanie to start?
Well, I didn't really prepare anything, but I can answer any questions you want.
Okay.
Whatever you want me to do.
Okay. All right, so Stephanie, I'm going to ask you to move. If you would introduce yourself and the work that you've been doing, and your take on this complicated issue.
Thank you, Tammy. Hi, my name is Stephanie Hadley, and I am a regional housing coordinator from Reitzport down to the border, and I have been having conversations between Mayor Kaufman, myself, Chief Jordan White, as well as folks from the Homeless Coalition, like Beth, Parker Hidalgo, as well as Jerry O'Sullivan from Adapt. And then we also have SCRIPT at the table, which is the South Coast Rural Integrated Project Team. And the SCRIPT group has granted the Homeless Coalition $60,000 to get some sort of a homeless shelter, campground, callet shelter, or something, we're in talks of what that could potentially be, to jumpstart this project. In addition, I have submitted a letter of interest to submit on a grant through the Judith and Morgan Foundation, and we found out last week that we did get approval to submit a grant. So as this forms, and we find out more of how the council will go tonight, we could potentially be going after some more funds to support this project, as well as what Mayor Kaufman has already mentioned. I don't have to speak to the issue that everybody sees there on the ground, but we are definitely seeking solutions, not only in Gold Beach, but in Curry County. It just seems like the stars are starting to align, where there's a group of people, there's funds that are showing up, and hopefully there will be some traction at the suggestion and at the direction of council, hopefully that we can continue with this project. It is very, very preliminary in these discussions, and so tonight is important to find out how much further we can discuss solutions for this.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go with the council and do our normal round robin. We'll start with Councilor Brett.
I'm definitely interested in trying to read a couple of states who have been decided to use funding to help homeless instead of using law enforcement, housing, hospitals, and jails. I'm interested, before the conversation's over, I'd like to hear Chief White's input, but I'm intrigued, will you listen?
Sir, did you want to give input before they speak?
Before or after is fine with me.
Okay. Then we'll go to Councilor Brett.
I'm definitely open to this conversation. I'd like to learn more. I am in favor of hearing more. Thank you very much.
Counselor Skinner.
I too am very excited to be seeing information, thanks for what you've done and the long-term assessment you've been collecting information to learn from. And Ms. Hadley, thank you for talking about all of Curry County. I was in a conversation with a counselor in Fort Orford, and he was talking about work that Coastal Community Health is doing, regional approaches, and I think that is definitely part of the solution. Thank you.
Counselor Miguel.
I'd be delighted to hear what you've learned in Fort Orford. Thank you. I'm very interested in hearing more about this, and learning more, and learning about how we can work with the area entities in the city and county to resolve the problem of our homeless. It is possible in the summertime, because people can find someplace to kind of hide out, but it rains, and it blows, and we've got to do something before winter comes.
Thank you, Counselor Matt. Gymnasium voice. Okay, so the first question here... Okay, so the first question here asks if the council wants to try to find some city-owned property to start a project like this. Ms. Hadley mentions that the project is in the works, and they're looking to continue that. So I think there's some conversation that needs to be had, and I'm in support of furthering the conversation. I'd like more time than a council meeting for discussion, and engaging the residents, as well as law enforcement, first responders, public works, those that would be impacted, especially when it comes to identifying the use of ARPA funds. I know that it's an eligible use of those funds, but also property. Like, there's a lot of questions here that I think that I'm not comfortable answering without going to the input from citizens. But yeah, let's have a talk. Okay. With that, Chief White, would you look to give some input? I know that your department spends a long time with this issue.
Not a mayor, a council. I can't think of a topic across the entire country now that's being more divisive in law enforcement and the communities, because it's a transition. And I commend you guys for taking this challenge on, because the ruling is clear, and it's in one area, and that is that if we want to direct people's behavior, we must take certain steps. We must create places for homeless to be if we want to tell them they can't be where they are. So that's the simplest way to explain the importance of this, and that's coming from somebody who's done this job for 26 years. I've also grown up and lived in very conservative communities where I believe, and it seems like most folks in Gold Beach also share the perspective that you work to eat. And it does go against the grain sometimes to have folks providing housing for people who choose to do drugs and behave badly and not contribute to the benefit of the community. And I get it. I get it a lot. These rulings are complex, though, and the fact that it took the League of Cities one year to provide guidance on a Supreme Court ruling is an indication of a problem. And in that last year, while we've waited for guidance, police have tried to literally shoot from the hip sometimes to find solutions to these problems. And everything from changing people's adult diapers on the side of the road, to have that same person throw a boulder through their windshield, or take a hot cup of coffee that was delivered to them and throw them back on the officer, it's just an unpleasant situation, and we haven't had any tools. And the tools that we're gonna have as a community to change, if we want to decide what this looks like, is gonna require the community supporting the council in making a really tough decision about giving some options for us to direct human behavior so we can preserve the values that we live in Gold Beach to enjoy. And there's no answer that's gonna make everybody happy, but we must do something. And if we don't, this is probably the leading reason why law enforcement officers are leaving the field of law enforcement, and we just, new officers aren't applying for the job because they don't want to deal with this confusion. When people are confused, they vote no. And that's what our officers across the country, but especially in the state of Oregon, are doing. And they're going somewhere else or doing something else with their lives. And I don't want to give up what we've created in Gold Beach and the values that we have here. So I support and recommend that we pursue this, and I thank Stephanie Hadley for being a ringleader of ideas and energy to give us some options so we can come back to you with solid recommendations. And I really appreciate all these documents that are coming out now so the community can be educated. At the beginning of my career, there was a tremendous fear of consequences, and those consequences weren't necessarily issued in courts. Those were back in the days of lead saps and batons, and that's what kept people hiding, and it kept them moving along. We don't do that anymore. We have body cameras, we have, we treat people with respect even if they don't deserve it, and that's what our society expects, and it's what our officers expect. And because of that, we don't have a new jail. We have a jail that doesn't allow us to jail offenders, and we have business owners that are extremely frustrated, because we write tickets, and the DA's frustrated because he remands them to jail, but we just don't have room for them. So they get sentenced to 15 days, but they just serve less than one because they get kicked out, so a violent offender can be jailed. So that's the situation we're in. We need a new jail. We need a place for homeless to go to the bathroom, so they don't go on the side of the street. Welcome to the challenge, right? Thank you.
It is a challenge. You're right, and I'm sorry that your department has to deal with it, and I imagine its department deals with it as well. And you know, all I do is get yelled at, which isn't a big deal because it's on the phone, I might hang up if I want. Did you want to say something? No? Okay. Ms. Redd, your cue.
I just would say that, because what I'm hearing is information gathering, and it's up to the council, but I liked what North Bend did, or they did the community, because I agree with what the chief said, is that when people don't understand, they vote no. And people, I think that is, and I've said this a lot lately, including to our attorney today, that a lot of our community is still back in the old days where we shave them and give them a ride to the county line. Okay, there's a lot of people that are still in that mode. We're not there anymore. And until we can provide information about why we're not there anymore, I don't think there's gonna be buy-in from the community. And it is a problem. It's like, I don't want to look at these people, I don't want these people doing these things, but then they don't want to deal with what the alternative is either. So it's a really difficult hard decision. But I was just thinking that the outreach that North Bend did to try to get, just kind of gauge, I know what the answers are gonna be, but at least we can say, you know, we've had a dialogue, and these are the things. But it's, I would agree with Counselor Madison that this is not something we're gonna decide tonight. This needs to have really thoughtful, involved conversations with everyone. We all know, because of our small community, that we are lacking in a lot of essential resources. And we've talked before about how we do not have the resources to invent those resources. So we need to find out what's out there, what groups can work together, and, because the way things are going, it's not working, but I also don't feel like some of these models that we've looked at are gonna work for our community either. I think it needs to look different. That's my two cents.
Thank you. So, a couple of the challenges, of course, is always property, where would we put it? And there's some good partners on the list, like 2015. What we would look for, the city does own a few properties that we could look at. None of them are perfect. The city could look at purchasing some properties. There's always a couple of suggestions that came up that might be an option. But moreover, if we're gonna have that conversation, then we need to start looking at specifics. I know that there was a grant writing on your decision tonight, if you want to lean in or lean out, but I think in order for that grant to happen from SCRIPT, we have to actually say, yes, we're going to find a location, and yes, we'll have it open by October. And I don't know if that's possible or not. I'm getting some interesting clues.
It's, I would say from a staff point, that is probably not possible. We need to have some really deep discussions with the stakeholders and the people that we deal with. And when I say that, I mean the hospital, and the jail, and the mental health providers, and subsidies providers. That's not gonna be in place by October.
Well, we do, Stephanie Hadley and I have spoken with Adapt. They are definitely interested in being a partner, but they don't want to be the primary partner. And the Homeless Coalition has said that they're interested in being the primary partner, but I don't know if they have the depth. They're working on it. And so, my thought, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm an optimist, is that if we could come up with something for three or four, maybe five years, that the housing problem will be solved for the most part. I'm expecting by then, we'll have some sort of subsidized housing unit, we'll probably have a project term key program done, and I'm hoping that we won't have this constant pressure. We're still gonna have the criminal element, there's not a lot we can do. Nobody wants to rent to somebody that never stops committing crime. It's just the way it is, there's nothing I can do about that. They have to make better behavioral choices in order to become housed. But for the people that just have health issues or addiction issues without the criminal element, they can be housed, they can be retrained, and I've read some documentaries, listened to some documentaries. So with that, if I heard the council correctly, you're more interested in researching? Go ahead, Counselor.
Can I ask a quick question? Ms. Hadley, on that October deadline for the grant thing, with the research and the collaboration you've already been working in, does that seem plausible at all on your end, or does that seem a big stretch?
Oh, we would have to check in with the Script group, which I anticipate Tammy and I doing tomorrow. They are, I don't want to speak directly for them, so I'm not with that group, but it seems that they are flexible if there is a reasonable plan, and plan is loose, right? As long as we're moving in that direction, it seems that they can accommodate. Otherwise, what would end up happening is we would have to pass on that grant for this year, reapply for the next year's cycle. So there's a window of opportunity, and obviously the pressure is on from many different angles. But Mayor Kaufman and I are happy to follow up with them after this and provide more information there.
Thank you.
History on that grant, it was actually originally for a school project that fell apart, so it's, they're still trying to use that for something. So that's what I think.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. How can we have a grant for something we don't have a plan for?
It was to reapply it for a different purpose. So, if I'm understanding correctly, the council is interested. What, how is this a way to start today? Go ahead.
Didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to say, yes, I'm interested in these proposals, these ideas. I personally was not aware that homeless, that homeless people were causing some turmoil. I give my credit to Chief White and his efforts for the Homeless Coalition, and I'm involved. It is visible, it's a visible situation for these people. It looks like there are some solutions, or at least efforts of solutions. I just wanted to say, before I cut you off, that we have to look into these possible solutions.
Anybody else?
What's the potential for us to have a workshop with potential community partners?
That's what I was gonna, just like, where do you want us to go? Tell me what you want us to do.
I think it's a double, because the second thing on the agenda is the time, place, and manner, and I had kind of a heated argument with the administrator about whether or not these go together or not. And okay, you're right, they go together.
I was saying they're one topic, you're saying they're two.
I said they're separate topics, but now that I've read what you've put in the packet, which, by the way, you always do an excellent job on the packet, thank you. I was very defeated after reading it, but then I'm more of a fool, so it's just a really complicated problem. And, you know, Main Street brought us this great beautiful picture a couple of weeks ago, and all I can see is these building trees with tints on them, and I'm like, that would be horrible. And we gotta find a better solution, because it's not safe to camp on 101. Not without having a park to be in and a fence, and it's just not safe. And I don't want people to be unsafe. So, workshop? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Thumbs up.
Okay.
Okay, do we want to set a time?
How soon?
Where are we here?
Yep.
This closing?
Yep.
It's easier, just now that we're in this uber-digital age, I can't do this on the road, so it's gonna be.
No more roadshow?
So you all are working folks, so you tell me what works for you guys.
Would the 13th be too soon?
Oh, we can't be 11th of a 14th.
We might need a little time to get notice out to the others, the people that would be stakeholders. So, I'm out of town, we get the 18th, so I could do the 26th.
July?
Up to the year of the fair at that time. I hope you got it the day of before fair starts.
Put stuff together. Is there anything we could do that? Do we all bring our paper next week? Is that soon enough for the deadline for Script and your schedule? Mayor?
The night's on the bill, why don't you get the 13th and 15th, which are not actually available?
13th, you said, you said 14th you're available.
She said the 11th and 14th.
The 13th?
I think that later would probably be better than sooner, because I don't know how you guys feel about wanting to get, like, input from the community, because I can get a survey out, like, this week so that we could have some answers for you guys. But then we also need.
Or we could create a survey from that meeting.
Okay.
So is the week of the 25th too late in regards to what net work area?
She said the fair is that week.
So we're looking at the week after our last session.
This person sounded like, from what Ms. Hadley said, as long as these days we're working on something, that their deadline on the script end is flexible. So that's our first week of August?
First week is always the best for me.
Okay, we have a meeting on the first.
We have a meeting on the first. We won't have a housing meeting that night, so I don't think we want to try to fit it in that night, because it's gonna be a 45-minute chum.
About Wednesday, Hadley?
I will.
Do we want to try and put in a forceps meeting so that we can make a formal decision?
Well, that was the problem with the fair week. And then I've gone to the 4th. But...
Could you call him remote?
That's, I was just trying to think on my schedule. I would call him remote on Wednesday, the 20th, or Tuesday, the 19th. Actually, or Monday. So whatever, good point. Could use some technology, Counselor Madison. Thank you for reminding me what year I'm living in.
Are you and I the craziest for night meetings?
Okay, so 18th, 19th, 20th? No, Mayor? No?
Sorry.
School, 11th, 20th, I'm basically going to the 2nd.
Hold on, hold on a second.
I can't do the second. I have Dr. Swamen in Ashland.
Not do the second.
I think that I think it's a good stakeholder to have at the table, is have someone from the school, because I don't know our rates in Gold Beach, but our over-rates were like 30% of our student bodies qualified.
Anybody want to give up a Friday?
Perhaps the 22nd or 23rd?
Go ahead. 22nd or 29th?
50, I can.
29th is fair.
Oh, 29th is fair, so that's out.
Second?
Can I sell the 15th or the 22nd?
I can do the 15th. I don't know my schedule of the 25th.
I'll do a Saturday or Sunday. My boss is me, so you guys figure it out, my customers will have it.
Can you do the 15th?
I can do the 15th, yes.
What did you say was the question?
I see a maze, so conferences.
I don't know what that is. So the 15th? Going once, going twice, sold. What time tonight? So the 15th, going once, going twice, so, what time tonight?
What time?
Can we do 6:30?
6:30 is?
6:30 workshop, July 15th.
Let's make it a workshop slash meeting in case they want to be...
Okay, and then, is it okay with the council if the mayor and I get together on what the agenda will be, will that work for you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Got it. Do you think someone in the coalition can come?
Absolutely.
Can you sell that for us?
Yes.
And Ms. Hadley, do you think somebody could at least come remotely?
Did I hear that was July 15th at 6:30?
Yeah.
Yes, I can log in for that.
Awesome. Okay, I think we have a plan. Thank you everybody for being patient with us dealing with that, and we can, does anybody want to talk about the place, time, place, and manner, or tonight, or you want to push that off and workshop? We did all got a nice educated reading out of that.
And that'll give me some time to get some more info from, from our attorney, from other cities.
What I would like to suggest on the time, place, and manner, is when I read it, it affects the cemetery district, the library district, the school district, county, I believe it affects the fairgrounds, and it may be worth having that conversation and being congruent, especially if they're in the city limits, because they're going to say, Chief White, get over here and fix this problem, and Chief White's going to go, well, your law doesn't match the law. So if we're not involved in helping them with that decision, then our attorneys can't back up our law enforcement, so I'm wondering if that should be a bigger discussion with those other entities and how do we communicate with them? Do you guys talk about that?
Well, I, it was actually the library, the library district manager that contacted us initially last summer about, you know, that this law was coming down, so I know that Mr. Skinner is on top of the subject, so I would say he would be one of the people we would invite to the workshop. And then also, the port at that time was also talking to the library district, I don't know if they still are, but we would, that would be another group. But yeah, all of the special districts and public entities within the city limits, we would definitely want them at the table, because obviously, A, they're not going to want to come up with their own plan anyway, and B, we need to have a thing that's going to work for the PD inside the city limits, so all of those groups that are inside the city, we would want them all at the table.
Okay. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, we're good. All right. Didn't take as long as I thought it would. And we will now, wait for the recess, and convene as the urban renewal agency, and we will come back, and I will put it off to hand it over to Counselor Bradley.
So we're gonna, I'm not projecting that.
Jimbois, Jimbois, you're catching.
I'm trying, I'm trying. We're gonna call this meeting the order at 7:23, and bring it to the council. Any more thoughts from our workshop, if you guys are ready to make the decision, if you need more information? Maybe a summation of where we're at? That's not already scheduled.
Okay, so I would say as a summary, that there was a request by Gold Beach Main Street to, to change the original grant approval from December, and that was discussed in great detail at the workshop on the 23rd. A portion of that, they discussed about what part one or phase one was, and part two, phase two, so I think, I think we got enough input at that last meeting, but it's up to you guys what you want to do, but if you decide that you just want to cut to the chase and, and approve their request, there is a suggested motion there. They did ask, the Main Street coordinator did ask if she could address the urban renewal agency tonight, and I said that would be up to you guys, so, but basically, you had got the information at the workshop, so now it's up to you if you want to, it doesn't negate the approval that they had before, it's just, do you want to change the approval or just say they have what they have, or whatever. That's my summation.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Skinner.
Oh, I, I'm looking at a packet here, and the idea of marketing our $30,000 within a bigger pot of money, marketing our $30,000 to this underground utility piece, that seems a reasonable move, but I'd be willing to hear what the Main Street president has to share tonight.
Counselor, we go through everything?
No, I think I've, pretty much what I was thinking at the last D, the workshop that we had, and I agree with Counselor Skinner, that's something we need to hear about and see if that's a reasonable way to earmark and separate, and just to accommodate the underground.
All right, thank you. Counselor, I should, go ahead, have a chance to address this real quick.
Jimbois.
That is completely up to you, you guys.
Give them a chance to address this again real quick, and then I think we're, I know I have one, Counselor, I'd make a motion that if I didn't, it'd hurt.
Can I address the urban renewal committee?
Thank you.
Jimbois, big boys, I'm gonna try to copy, speak in broad bid.
Okay, I'm Lori Van Zandt, President of Gold Beach Main Street, and I would like first to introduce our board, I'm really happy that they're here, and we have six of the seven people. First, we have Deb Tryon, who's Vice President, and she can be seen traveling to Portland to pick up trees and all kinds of things, she's our master gardener that happens for that. Sherry McNair is our treasurer, not one dime leaves that coffers without her permission. She's very protective and she does a great job. Renee Colen, she's kind of our wonderful contact to government and politics and everything involved in that, she has arranged great meetings with us with the assistance of the Governor Alex Campbell. We have Kim Wykoff, and she is our secretary, and nobody wants to do minutes, and Kim does a great job, so we're really grateful to you, Kim. And our new board member that has since taken Miranda's position is Marta Williams, and that woman is phenomenal, she comes to us as a master gardener, complete with a dump truck and a trailer and the whole schmear. And so, we are missing Michelle Fritch, who kind of has an education connection for us, and as we all know, she's very charming and telling us like it is, so we love having her on board also. I'd also like to thank Carl King, I'd like to thank you, Carl, for all you do to make this visible to the community, and it's very appreciated. And now I'd like to thank the council, first I'd like to take you, thank you Chip, for putting together a workshop for us. The history of what's happened here is we've asked to reappropriate this money from strictly urban renewal dollars over now to a broader scope feasibility study. I want to explain a little bit, first I want to address a couple of Jody's comments in the packet and say that, Jody, we agree with you in terms of miscommunication, and we're sorry, and we are new to this, and we are learning as we go. So, we want to be a team, we want to communicate in an appropriate way, we want, we are nothing without United with the city, our, the relationship is imperative to us, we get it. So, also, I want to also explain her comment on renderings, because this is just a prototype here, this is not what's going to be one of the options for us. So you see this here, we have to go to a feasibility study to know what can work in our town. We know we're not poor or furt, we know our street's narrower, but we need to learn what our options are, so when you see this, which I think you've seen this already, Jody?
Yeah, but like I said, it wasn't until the meeting, so it would have been nice to have seen that prior to the meeting.
Exactly.
So that we could have given some comments prior.
And I, and I agree with you completely on that, so we learn as we go, we are city planners for Gold Beach Main Street, you know, you love Renee Brown, I do too, and one of she, one of her quotes is, face your fears and do it anyway. So there we are, we're Gold Beach Main Street, trying to help this town have some vision, and we don't do everything perfectly, but we are proud of our devoted energy, and with that, Valerie, I want to say, sorry, Counselor McGillicuddy, I got it, that's right, I want to say to you that Tammy Kauf, Mayor Kaufman, and I helped raise her, she went to Chit Chit in the kitchen, I can call her Tammy, okay? Mayor Kaufman said to me once, she said, there's only one group in this town, and this is getting chills, that has spent, and that has had the test of time, and it's been a theater group. How many years have you been in existence?
Oh, the theater has been there since... It was made before 1980.
Okay, so see, we'll never catch here, so we're six, six plus years, we're not seven yet, are we? No, so we're six years, most of the board members you see here are charter members. We are a group of women, believe it or not, that really stay united, and we let go of things when they don't happen, we join up, we're a team, that's what we want to be with you, with the city, we really do, we really, we have great vision, we understand execution, and so, we want to join up with you and make this happen. I do want to say that I don't think the community understands that, was it in 2013, Jody, with doing the 30,000 blight study, did you get urban renewal dollars?
Don't understand what, I'm sorry.
Okay, you took the initiative to do a study to prove that Gold Beach has blight, and with that, we were awarded urban renewal dollars, is that true?
No, it, the, the city had to determine if there was blight, it's a statutory, and then if so, did the city want to form an urban renewal district?
Okay.
And that, the council at that time, the question was posed to them, yes, at that time they did.
Right.
And so then, the plan was put together, and the projects were included in the plan, so it's not that we were given money, it was just...
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I am so impressed now as a citizen, and want to verbally and publicly give credit to the city for having the vision to do this. Anna just went with funding from Maria Wilder's Coast Alliance to a national organ, Main Street meeting. Lots of cities don't have urban renewal dollars, they're jealous that we have a city that has had the insight to do the $30,000 study, which I believe it was, and I could be incorrect on that, but, and to establish an urban renewal dis...
Is it a district? I don't know what it is, anyway. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an area.
Okay, and so, that money has, what has helped us fully from Main Street propel into having vision and execution, and so, the community needs to understand that this is a huge thing that our town has done, and it's been a great decision. So, as we move forward, we want to explain to you a little bit about what unfolded with us with Murray Smith, because we were learning as we went along, and what we found was that, many things, ADA sidewalks, lampposts, banners, flowers, trees that Mayor Kaufman loves, all of this, all these options should be looked at, and not only did we find that, and our wonderful community coordinator, Anna, which I forgot to introduce, oh my goodness, this is what nervousness does, and my husband has told me it's okay for me to be nervous, right, honey? Okay, Anna, our wonderful new community coordinator here, said to us, we have also learned from Murray Smith and ODOC, you are not going to get the dollars you need to even put in underground utilities if you don't make the scope of this study larger, because everybody wants to make a difference. They don't want to just put utilities under, and you see it in all the towns, they want the scope to be larger. That was a deciding factor in us moving forward to want more dollars. And luckily, Tammy was at, Mayor Kaufman was at one of our consulting meetings with Ford Family Foundation, and found that our scope had enlarged, and we hadn't communicated that with you, so here we are back here doing this. One of the elephants in the room that we're not here to discuss tonight, but should be brought up, is that we feel as though traffic calming is the contentious elephant in the room that people are concerned about, they're either very pro or very against traffic calming, and we're here to tell you that's not why we're here tonight. That could come up in the future, that can come up in town hall meetings, we have money funded by Ford to have town hall meetings for us to discuss all this, but right here tonight, what we're here for is we want the Urban Renewal Committee to agree to fund a broader scope feasibility study, so we can now move forward and call Murray Smith tomorrow and get this started, because literally, there are millions of dollars sitting there right now, and we worked hard, once we broadened the scope, to raise 70, $75,000 to do this scope, because Murray Smith, with everything we want to do, including all of Coos Curry's expenses to get them underground, and Sipley and everybody to go with us, it's going to cost $100,000. So, where am I leaving with this? We want to have the vision and the execution, Murray Smith did Florence from beginning to end, they're a very credible engineering company, we feel very confident with them. So, why do we want to do this study? Does the council know a little history on that, why we want to do this study? Because we have been funded by Ford Family Foundation, and we've done listen to learn dinners and breakfasts. At those times, everybody, what is their number one request? We've got it all documented, underground utilities, improved streetscape on Main Street, number one. Then we did a survey, what was the number one thing brought up? The same thing. Then we went, Anna and I went around Main Street, and we visited over 20 Main Street businesses, because I thought it was legitimate that you as an urban renewal committee was wanting to know, how do the Main Street businesses feel about it? 20 of them, all of them, absolutely 100% in favor of a broad scope feasibility study. So, that's why we're here, that's why we'd like this to be approved, and I do have another quote for you, so here it goes, and I'll, and I'll give you $100 if you know who said it, are you ready? It's not in our budget, is it, honey? There is no such thing as luck, success is when preparation meets opportunity, and I stand here before you today to tell you that we as Gold Beach Main Street have been working for a year on this, we've been developing relationships with funders, why are you laughing at us?
Oh, you know it is.
What?
Dennis Whately?
No.
Thank goodness.
Vince Lombardi?
No. You're not going to get it, I will tell you, you give up. Anybody?
I'll take a guess.
Oh, you're not in the room, you're wrong. But go ahead, and I won't give you the money, go ahead.
I have a sales background, so I think I know the answer.
Oh, you probably do, unless, let's see if Jordan can get it, because he needs 100 bucks, no.
I do, but I'm not, I can't.
Okay, all right, Stephanie, let us, let's have it.
Is it Zay?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's somebody, it's somebody I really wouldn't suspect, because this person goes more in the category of touching and feeling, but I think this is a pretty, a pretty assertive statement, anyway, it's overwind for you. So now you probably don't like the quote, right? Okay, I'm going to show you something, it says, Tammy has always talked to us, oh, Mayor Kaufman has always talked to us about using urban renewal dollars as seed money whenever we do something, it's a great comment, and it's well received. It starts with a wonderful community coordinator, which you're helping one-third of the funding for, which is now, hopefully, almost making a living wage, working full-time with full benefits, we're very proud of that, and welcome, Anna, we're happy to have you. And welcome, Anna, we're happy to have you. Grateful. Anybody recognize this guy? Darren from ODOC, he's been down here before. He's very excited about our town. He told us about a new program called Great Streets. This program is offering $40 million within the state of Oregon. And he has told me personally, there were one out of four choices for him, for us to apply for this grant, with a maximum of $4 million per city that wins. You need to get all of the money, you need to have a very extensive plan. And he's listed that plan here in terms of ADA sidewalks and safer crosswalks and bump outs and all kinds of things. So what's going on for us right now is that we, as a city, need to determine, by having Murray Smith come down here and Darren from ODOC, we need to determine, what do we want? We need to do it quickly. So that Murray Smith can move forward and the bulk of our $100,000 can be spent on what it is we want. We don't want to spend a lot of money having two extensive studies done and then choose one. And furthermore, it isn't even two extensive studies. You want a little bit from over here? You want ADA sidewalks? Okay. You want bike lanes? Well, then you can't have parking. You want parking, you can't have bike lanes. We don't know. So we're going to look at all of this. Murray Smith is very competent to show this to us. We choose in a town hall meeting or a workshop or whatever it is we choose, and then we move forward. So this could be our seed money for all the millions and millions of dollars that are sitting out there right now that we have to find in a pipeline for funding this. Okay? So in conclusion, I would like to say that one of the councilors, you know, we discussed the economy of our town and how many empty buildings do we have on Main Street? How many do we, how many do you think we have? Main Street that could be businesses in our town right now? Two?
Two.
I'm not going to give you $100 for this one.
I was going to.
No. Anyway, I personally went around, I drove through every building, including the back of our building, because I consider that Main Street. And I came up with 13. And what I saw in that were broken windows, sheets over windows, shower curtains over windows, buildings that are unfinished, buildings that have damage in them. So I ask you, urban renewal committee, that has wonderful urban renewal funds, who do we want to be? We had 23 graduates this year. How many do you think we had when my son graduated from high school? 60. Do we want to have an attitude as a city and as Gold Beach Main Street that we want to improve? Or are we happy the way we are? Do we want to attract a little bit of small industry and regain some of our middle class? Or are we happy the way we are? We have to decide what we want here. So I have a list of four things, not from Oprah, but they are four things that we think make a town thrive. Number one, quality education. We have young people on our school board, and they're working hard to deal with the challenges of funds. And they're doing a good job. Number two, quality healthcare. We're striving on that. I was on the hospital board for six years. We're still striving. But Curry Health Network just got four stars for quality service. So they're improving. Unique recreation, check. Boy, we've got a lot of that stuff. Good food, we could use more. Great service, that could be improved. And then lastly, an inviting, welcoming Main Street that shows the heart and pride of our town. That right there is the single most impactful thing we can do in this community to make our town attractive and inviting. It can take the 60,000 jet boat drivers, tourists, that come through this town every year, and guess what? They're going to see Main Street, see how much we love our own town, and they're going to stay one or two more nights in the hotel. They're going to eat. And then they're going to go into these 13 vacant buildings that are going to be businesses selling unique and wonderful things. And our town is going to get more vibrant. It's going to thrive a little bit more. All of that matters. So council, if you want to make a difference and help this community thrive, I ask you to please vote yes. Please look at the difference between the top and the bottom picture. Look at how we can change Main Street. We can single-handedly do this together by hiring the right people and gathering the funding. And as Meredith Powell said to us, we are really good at bringing community and funders together with vision to make things happen. Have vision and execution is what's needed, not just talk. So here we have it right here. Would you like to see our town change?
Yeah.
Yeah? So we have a statement here that was made by Spirit, who did the renderings for us. He did them for free. He's an architect, and he's been very gracious to us. And he sort of made a quote in his email to us today. And he said, "Vision building is the most effective tool I know of for leading change." So right here, this is vision building. And it may not be completely accurate. It's okay, it's just a vision. It's what gets people excited, it gets them to buy in. It's what gets Rhea and Billy to come to this meeting tonight. They care about our town, as we all do. So with that said, I thank you, council, very much. Thank you for your caring, and I hope you choose to support us. Thank you.
Counsel, the floor back. If anybody has anything to add? Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to motion that the Urban Renewal Agency reaffirm funding the feasibility study grant for underground electric telecom TV, other overhead utility lines on Ellensburg Avenue, contingent upon successfully funding the remainder of the study costs. Feasibility study must include any potential additional cost from the various utility providers in regard to their specific utility requirements for undergrounding. And this will be, let's see. I'm not going to include underground utilities only.
We can't hear you.
I'm not including or limiting it to underground utilities only. So amending the original grant award. Or we could look to amend it, but I would like to put in $30,000. And set forth in the terms of the MOU adopted by both agencies.
Second motion. Administrator Fritz, can you read that back?
I make the motion that the URA reaffirm the grant approval to fund the Gold Beach Main Street request in the amount of $30,000 for, to fund a feasibility study, and I'm keeping the words out that were left out, for undergrounding electric telecom TV and other utility lines on Ellensburg Avenue. Did you say contingent upon?
No, I just deleted it.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Contingent upon successfully funding the remainder of the study costs. The feasibility must include any potential cost from the various utility providers in regards to their requirements. The next paragraph, next sentence, the beginning of that sentence list is left off, but it says, "As set forth in the terms of the MOU to be adopted by both agencies." Does that sound like, does that sound like it's a...
I have a motion, the second. Being chair, I don't need to approach her, because I take my first vote. So I'll call the questions, starting with Counselor McInnes.
Aye.
Counselor Skinner?
Aye.
Counselor McGilver?
Aye.
I will also be an aye. Motion passes by zero. I don't even know that our business is for the urban renewal.
I have a question. There are other projects that the Urban Renewal Agency has wanted to work on. And I'm wondering if at some point you might want to have a meeting and get back around the council and maybe talk about those and what you might want to direct, not direct, ask Main Street or community partners to help accomplish. For example, the Dairy Queen voting is empty. Would they like to help partner fixing that problem or some other thing? Just as a suggestion.
I think that'd be very appropriate. Four of us five have been here for a year and a half or less. And probably be really appropriate for us to sit down and look at what they're... Administrator Fritz, can we add that into the next one's meeting?
Sure. When the council, acting as the Urban Renewal Agency did in 2019, when the plan was updated with the housing goal, is that each of the members rated the projects that are identified in the plan for what their priorities were. And that's basically how we prepared the budgets for the last two years was based on those priorities. So I'll put that together for the next council meeting. And I'll talk to the mayor, because if we have too full of agenda because of the half, it may be the following meeting, but we'll see. Okay?
Administrator Fritz, that's the page 86 of our packet.
Yes. And that was adopted by the Urban Renewal Agency in March of 2019.
Listen, the other counselor has, you know, comments about the Urban Renewal Agency. Twenty-five people adjourned this meeting at 7:52.
We will convene as a city council at 7:52. And do you want to sign the MOU now? Is that okay with you, Administrator?
Yeah.
And then we can hand it to Ms. Van Zant and get it signed as well. We can hand this to, did you guys already vote to sign this? If not, we can just hand it to you and you can bring it back. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Got to deal with the paperwork too, you know?
Can we have just a little chance to review this?
Yeah, I want to check.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, everybody, for your support.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the option minutes. Were there any, are there consent counters? Was there any reason to not leave it as a consent counter? Or is the council okay with that, so this? Ask for a motion to include the consent counter. Counselor McGilver, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, it's by Counsel Bradley. Any discussion? I have a call for questions. Counsel Bradley?
Aye.
Counsel Regardis?
Aye.
Counsel Skinner?
Aye.
Counsel McGilver?
Aye.
Counsel Madison?
Aye.
Motion passes, you know. Update on dangerous building status, 289835 Ellensburg Avenue.
Okay, so at the June meeting, the council directed staff to move forward with the demolition quotes and structural engineering services to review the feasibility of saving the building or a portion thereof, in addition to having our legal team move forward with the advice provided in executive session. If you recall, we had a kind of a long executive session prior to the June meeting. So staff, Mr. Regano, has gotten in touch with a couple of different engineering firms. There is a firm in Grants Pass that has agreed to take it on. So they, the last conversation we had with them, I want to say it was Thursday or Friday, that they're reviewing their schedule and will be in touch with the scope and fee to perform an inspection and develop a report on additional potential structural issues. We did send them all of the information that we had, like the pictures and all that. They do, they have done other work on the coast. The folks that we had, the engineer that I had spoken to originally to do, he went to work for the Florida Bonfoclo. So he was not available any longer to do it. And so we contacted, I had Mr. Regano, we just started looking at structural engineers that worked in southwest Oregon. And we found a couple of folks over in Medford and Grants Pass. And so there's one that's been doing work over here, so they're familiar with the area. So hopefully, we'll be hearing something from them this week. And then I haven't gotten an update from our legal counsel. When I spoke to her after the council meeting last time, she was moving forward with the option that you had chosen and was bringing in a former partner, retired partner, that was going to work specifically on that. Because the partner had, like, had done stuff like that before. So she was going to have him come back in. So I will check in with her this week and find out where they're at on that. But it sounded like it was going to take a little while to get him up to speed on the whole situation and then find out about the option that you had chosen, like, what are all the ins and outs of that option? So hopefully, I will have something for you for the August meeting, and then you can make a decision.
Okay, it's still aye. The rainy, stormy season starts October-ish.
Yep.
If we file with a legal thing, we're pushing getting anything safe before the storms. So I think we need to light a fire, and we need to consult.
Well, it's not that they're not working on it. It's just that this is a complex issue that they've not ever been asked before. So it's blazing new trails. So, but the important thing for her, from her standpoint legally, was that we need to get the building inspection performed and find out from the structural inspector what we need to do to make the building safe, what all is involved in that. So for her, that's the biggest priority, is making sure that we can get the building made safe. So the sooner we can get them over here, that's her largest legal concern at this point. The other part, we can work through those avenues, but the making the building safe is the biggest thing for the attorney. And whatever that means, we don't know what that means at this point.
So the structural engineer will be able to tell us possibly some makeshift things we can do?
Like, does it need to be torn down? Can we, just like the motion said, is there a portion that can be saved? Is this completely beyond control? I mean, that's, and then once we have those, that information, and the reason why the attorney said that we need to have it done by an engineer is so that if we are forced to have to do something to the building, we need to have some kind of legal footing to say, okay, we've had a structural engineer assess this building, this is the only option available. Or these are the only options available. Because we're going to want to do the least amount to make it safe. And when I say the least amount, I just mean that we're also impeding on people's property rights as well. So we don't want to go tearing down somebody's property if it could potentially be saved. But we also don't want to sink a bunch of money into something that ultimately, we're probably not going to get the money out of it. So we need to do the least possible to gain the legal safety.
The council was very concerned about the next windstorm and potential hazards from asbestos coming out. So if the structural engineer could determine whether or not they can be safely secured, safely remove something, we can't wait till October to do something. It's kind of get done soon.
Right. But what I'm saying is, the attorney feels that way too. That the other option that we discussed in executive session, that can come later. But the attorney was, we need to get a structural inspector there as soon as possible. We would like to have had, already have them there, but we can't make one appear out of thin air. And the person...
So if you get it done, what do you mean 15th? We can have it there, we have two.
If we get it done in time.
Yeah.
But since we haven't even got this...
This is very important to the council. This is very important to the council. Councillor McGillery has already told me, I told you so. This wasn't going to work.
And I don't want you to think that staff doesn't think this is an issue. It's just we're experiencing things like everybody else, but we can't find anyone.
Right.
You know, and it is an issue for us, and we would like to get it taken care of. But we can't find competent professionals to do it.
But it sounds like you have one on the line.
We're hoping, yeah. But like I said, we haven't gotten their scope of work. Because that's just, just telling us how much it's going to cost us. But it's like, okay, well, once you tell us how much it's going to cost, which really, we have to pay whatever they say, because they're the only ones, when can you be here? And I'm thinking that since they seem to be the only one we can find, we're probably not going to be at the top of their list. I don't know if we can pay more to expedite that. But it's just, it's the same problem that COVID has created for every other industry. There's not bodies available to do work. Thank you.
Any other questions besides me being the one?
I still want you guys to think that we're not doing anything. It's just, we can't find anybody, people. I have a bunch of stuff I need done here at City Hall, and I can't find anyone to do it.
Thank you, Julie.
Well, I think a lot of the engineers are busy doing all this infrastructure funding because of the funds that are coming out. So why would they want to come over here unless we can say, hey, we get them on the coast?
I think if a wildfire starts over there, then they'll want to come over here. Because that's what we've had in the past.
All right. Once the update on ARBA ADU project catalysts to encourage more ADUs, I wanted to mention before I handed over to staff that I learned today that our ADU program allows for an ARBA park model, but Curicami will not issue a permit. All of the consequences. Take it away, Ms. Ritz.
Mr. Rigano put together an awesome new brochure. We had gotten a grant a couple of years back when we had first adopted the changes to our code. And we mailed that out a couple of times, but he's now refreshed it with information about the rebate program. So we're going to, I've ordered those. We'll do another mailing with those. But the mayor was talking about, you know, like, I mean, we've reached out to people that have applied for building permits to see if they are interested in the rebate program. Some of the people haven't answered. Because I don't know if they, I think some people are leery of strings attached. And oftentimes, there's strings attached, and they're having a hard time thinking that there's not. But the mayor had talked about, is there something that we can do to, like, you know, encourage folks to, like, if this is your time, if you're thinking? But also, the flip side is, the cost of building materials and stuff are really high right now. So it could be that folks are wanting to wait to see if the price of things comes down. So that's all I got for tonight.
I think it is a really good brochure. And I was wondering, would there be an advantage to mailing it to all city properties rather than the water bills, because water bills go outside the city limits?
Um, sure.
Yeah, we can do that. Any councillor want to put up a deal?
I have a question on the water bill thing too. Because my water bill goes automatically, and I don't get anything in the mail. So if we're doing things with water bills, are we emailing out PDFs of that as well as people who don't get a paper copy?
That is actually a really good question. And the reason why we send the water bills is so we don't have to pay extra postage. That's why we send it to the water bills. So that's a good question. I will ask Kim, because I'm pretty sure she gets a list of everybody's emails that get the express bill paid. And that's a good idea. Write that down. Okay.
Yeah, if they're on express bill pay and they don't get a bill, they get, we will print out several ones.
Can you make a voice, please?
If they're, if you get no bill, we do send out a mailer as well.
Yeah. So we'll do that.
Because we have to do our water quality reports. We send out to everybody.
Yes, that's right.
So we pull everything in and send it to everybody.
Good. Thank you for updating the brochure and giving the information out. And I know that as far as the strings attached concern, I know that the people we visited with, may I guess, the chemistry?
Yep.
Most head?
Yes.
That they were willing to feel people's calls and conversations too. So maybe if you can just get that message out there too, when you're leaving messages, like, no, really, there's people who will tell you that don't truly are, no strings attached. I was wondering, you know, Anthony, on your brochure update, could, is it, would it be possible before it's printed? What I presented is that, well, to change the images to show maybe the local ADU? If we're able to do that, just to give people a, this is what it looks like here on the ground?
Okay.
That was just an idea, a marketing idea.
So like instead of, with the construction thing, put in, what's the word, you know?
Yeah. Maybe one have the local one and one have like a generic, what's the ADU look like?
Okay. Yeah, that's a great idea.
I love the little diagram in the middle panel on the second, on the back.
Yeah, then that gives people an idea of what that looks like.
I do, I like it. It shows the way you do.
Any other questions or comments from the council? When you're talking to people, send them to Anthony. I've sent several, and I think actually some, I've actually contacted him.
Yes, if you hear, I'm going to try and visit the real estate offices too, because there's been a couple of the agents that have called that heard about the program but didn't really know what it was. So send, anybody that you know that was thinking about it or not, just tell them to give us a call.
Do you believe us?
We can explain everything to them, but-
I wonder if also talking to the staff, like at Gold Slumber, or it's just people who talk kind of these things with homeowners or roping and stuff, just so they're more informed on the end of that?
Yep, that's a great idea, Slumber Yard.
Because as far as the reason why we have Anthony now is, part of that is specifically for this. So, yeah. So feel free to throw folks his way.
You know, I think you could do this as a postcard. A full sheet of postcard. You just have to figure out a place to put the address and talk to the post office?
Yeah, well, I don't like, yeah, no. Dealing with, when you order things on the USPS website and you make it according to their standards, and then you bundle them by 50 or 75 per zip code, and then you take them down there with it, and they say, you've used the wrong forms, and they're the wrong size, yeah, it's really frustrating.
I don't mean bulk rate, I mean-
No, it's not bulk rate. It's the postage rate for certain things. And so they wanted us to, a dollar a piece, because they were oversized. Yeah, so, but they wouldn't direct me to where, not on the USPS site that I downloaded the information from, where to get it from. So, yeah, we, yeah, I'm not doing postcards with the post office.
My point is, people don't have the ability to, that's why political advertising always comes in postcard. So you might consider making it into a postcard, so that people don't have to open it. And the new postmaster is awesome. I've had a change, things have changed, and things are more positive.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting you do bulk rate, because that's always a-
It's not a bulk rate. It's specific for postcards, and they wouldn't accept it. And said that we didn't use, the form that we used was not the proper form. And it's on their website.
The new postmaster might be willing to sit down ahead of time and look at what's in prior to it being-
And especially when we order it from the printing company, and that is specifically the size for it, it's really frustrating.
The only thing you can do is just have them ship it. Brand companies do that, and you don't even have to ship it. It's all just a ship.
That might work better. Because when we seem to deal with the local post office, and we do everything according to what it says, and they won't mail it, it's really frustrating. Especially when we spend a lot of staff time doing it exactly the way the post office says, and then they don't mail it. Yeah.
Just like, because people don't open them.
And then you get, as I was saying, after, they think we have the mailer, and then you're doing, you get that whole, you can place it in.
Say that, I'm sure Cooper, everybody open his mailers. But we address the, we address them.
Okay, well, and that's something that your former partner had told me years ago, and I took it to heart. Michelle had told me years ago that people, there was some study that said people will open something if it's hand addressed. So I always hand address things I don't use the computer.
Anyway, anything else on this subject?
I feel, you know, I'm trying to remember. I feel that one point, you know, one of our conversations in the room, that we were talking about having, like, a model, like, you know, a model or a tour, somewhere where someone can go and see it, see something that looks like what this was fun. I don't remember.
We have our, we made a list, and it was like, what, four or five things that we were going to try and work out. And the only one that we've gotten to so far that the council decided was the rebate program. So we still need to figure out the rest of those other bullets as far as if we were going to find somebody that can streamline to walk somebody through, if we were able to get plans that were already pre-engineered and done.
That's not going to work.
But we can't get, we can't get through with the building department to do that, so.
And I have reached out to, I have reached out about that. And so it could be that we might still be able to do that. There's really no reason why we can't have pre-approved plans. It's, every other jurisdiction does it.
But also, if you come up with any ideas, shoot them to me, please. Any ideas that you think would be good to go present these things to or drop off flyers to, anything like that, let me know, please.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for the advice on the having the printer mail it. Because I think if they just go to the post office instead of us taking them, that might actually work.
They do it every day? Oh, wait. L O C 2023 legislative priorities update. I think that's what you have written on the back.
Yeah, and this is my name. I put these all up here, and as you can see, I didn't do enough space, so. So I figured that if, I don't know how you want to do this. If you wanted to say, have you already got your five and just tell us? Do you want to discuss them? I mean, however you guys want to do it, but we have them up here. We'll just put tick marks by what each person's is. And whatever the top five are is what we will send in for the city.
You know how the, if you go to a raffle and you put all the tickets into one, you can put one in each, or like, if you load them all into one, then you get more chance of getting that one? I only picked two in hopes of getting one of them.
You're going to put your five votes-
So I'm putting all five of my votes into two.
They're going to have to choose three, you only get five votes. You're going to have to choose one over the other.
Okay, then I'll put three on property tax report and two on infrastructure funding. And then we'll go to councillor Bradley.
Okay, so what you're saying is you don't want to have five, you want to add yours. Okay, sure, let's do that.
You want, what one?
Three and thirteen.
Three on thirteen.
No, no, thirteen. Yeah. And number three is-
And you want a two on that one? Is that, what did you say? I thought that's what you said.
Number three is infrastructure funding.
And you want a two on that one?
For housing.
On your five.
If we're allowed to do that.
You know what? You guys get to make the rules, so you do whatever you want. You get five votes, you can put all five on one, or whatever you want.
Do it that way or not. Let's use the number.
And then councillor Bradley?
That's why, look on page 170. And I did super short, super short. I didn't write out everything.
We will skip councillor Bradley and come back to him, and then councillor Martinez. Plus sign, sir, plus sign.
I see. I'm sorry, oh, yeah.
I can see it.
Thank you.
I can see it too.
Figured out of the way, you did see him.
All right, while he's thinking, we'll go on to councillor Skinner.
Yeah, and those are not real good for the headings, sorry.
Which I saw when I went through the L O C newsletter before. I was looking broad categories, and I chose five of broad categories. And then I would go back and go, it was twenty eight, twenty eight, twenty eight.
And then there's number one, which one?
So, yeah. I did number two, the local funding for the homelessness. Number three, infrastructure funding for needed housing. Number eight was the address to measure 110 shortening, but not the one on the decolonization of different drugs. The contact was fourteen. Number twenty eight, infrastructure financing and resilience. And number nine, the building de-pregnivation efficiency and modernization.
Councillor McGillery?
I chose number two, local funding. Number three, infrastructure funding for needed housing. Number four, community resiliency and wildfire planning. Number six, return to work. And number twenty eight, infrastructure financing and resilience.
That's what I said.
I didn't get that one, I can't get my colors. And I have to email it to me.
You're not going to try to wing it?
No, I'm not, not, because it goes into print and everything. I'll have to email it to you.
So if I come back to you, you won't have an answer?
No, I'm not doing it.
Councillor Bradley?
Two, two slashes and three, thirteen, twenty eight.
Thirteen?
Mm-hmm.
Councillor Martinez?
Thank you. I'll put a slash on number two. And slash on number three. Slash on number four. All right, see. How many is that, three?
Three. And you don't have to do five if you don't want to.
That's okay. Slash on number seventeen. And for thirteen, please.
Councillor Madison, do you want to email me yours? Does that work? If you have time tomorrow or whenever you-
Yeah, I'll do it tonight.
Okay. And then I'll add them up.
Thank you.
Okay, cool, thank you. And then once I, once we get councillor Madison's, I'll, we'll tally it up, and I'll send the top five, and I'll email you all.
Okay, 2021, Mayor O'Neal's tax report from the Department of Revenue.
I think we had the 185, just election update. And that was just that candidate filing had opened. Deadline is the thirtieth.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Well, it's the big giant owner's packet, I'm sorry. So just filing opened on the first, got till the thirtieth. If you are filing by signatures, have it in a week ahead of time, so that we have time to get it over to the county's office. Okay, now, Department of Revenue. This is just, I don't recall them sending me this report last year. I mean, if they did, I don't remember. But at the end of the last quarter, they sent this report just as a FYI for what they had done for us for the calendar year 2021. So I just included it. I don't really have anything to add to it, just that I thought you would be interested in how they collect the money and what they, how they get it to us. Just thought it was a good FYI.
Is quarter folded down because of the measure 110 you think, or is that?
I, me personally, I think it's because of uncollected revenue.
Okay. That makes sense. Because you noticed there was a company in interest there?
Yes. So that's my, that's my guess on that.
Never miss with the Department of Revenue for a state department. Very good. Okay, June water project photos.
You know what?
You've been waiting here all this time for this?
Mr. Newdahl's here, so-
These photos are really cool.
Come on, Ewold. You waited this whole meeting, so come on.
I just arrived here just to answer any questions that may arise. Good evening here, and the council.
Are you sick of the project yet?
No, no, this is one of the best investments in the future of Gold Beach. You did, I've worked on this for eight years to get to this point. Through engineering, financing. Through engineering, financing, the whole rigmarole of fighting to make it to a port, we could get this job started, so. No, this is, this is good, this takes care quite a few, um, liabilities, we had this system, very dangerous parts that could have taken out the end of the bridge and stopped all north-south transport on Earth, so. I mean, we have solved quite a few problems, uh, this project is seismic built, it is always strange on height, but strong at low up to the part. And so if we do have a seismic event, everything we've installed will stay stable. And only where it attaches to the existing system is there some place that they're possibly going to be. With confidence, this is a good project.
Is that why all those bolts are going around it?
Yes, and fancy little connectors on every single joint, which the crew can't say loves to install, but it slows the project way down as they weigh height. About once it's in there, it's high caliber. The good part is that we have about one percent in chain orders, this is a two point four million dollar project, so has very, very good performance for construction, underground construction. Especially with, you never know what you're gonna find, it's like archaeology, one on one, when you get out there and start leaning around, finding lots of confidence and after deal, coming up with different pipe parts and different lash up methods, and so it's gone quite well. And so the show.
U P S was trying to pull over.
What surface? That was.
Any questions for the council?
So you can speak up now? I was just taking a picture, you can see where those joints, I feel those joints, yeah. And you can see that there's, there's flexibility in that, isn't there?
Yes, those are the ones that are on the bridge and so designed, so as the bridge fluctuates this way on its foundations and the red surface outside is going this way and water main tracked inside of it, it's a ball shaped fitting and so the tube can move this way and that without one part. If I can, I'd like to give you a quick update on our next big project.
And I would like to thank you for being persistent and making sure of this thing does.
Yes, and we'll see city streets get some attention next week. Sounds like tide waters are gonna come in and they're gonna begin patching the cuts that are on Coleman and June Streets and all ways towards the park and mall, and they'll begin and start working on the drug and start repairing, uh, all the trench marks there. And of course, that being done, a part time sweeping down and keeping it clean until, um, it's, yes.
It would be nice to do a little press release also while on the positives of the project, so, so that those few people that are frustrated understand that this is really a good thing.
Yes.
I know you don't have a lot of time, but.
Yes, it, just a short blurb about the investment in the future of Gold Beach.
Now that's finally ready, then?
And make it pop out on social media and maybe calm down some of the competitors.
This also helps for expansion on all points where this water main is, um, we have large commercial expansion or large most storied housing. We have plenty of water infrastructure in those areas now where that's not a problem and we had already built up the sewers in those areas. And so that really allows construction just to go, there's no constraints up the capacity.
The area down, um, it's called Port Drive, we're Chief White's property and several other properties are being ready to develop, are you putting that on this one? While you're doing it, or?
We're not doing any work on the sewer system. Ladders will be placed on it, but.
Why do you call it when you do it?
Like the water for head to services.
You call it service, not water.
There was only one extra service that we put in and that was for the old Drifting Motel, which I know that guy Brock just sold.
Okay.
And so we replaced it with the same size, uh, a larger two inch size, which will handle a large motel.
Okay.
I'm just gonna choose this.
Now talk about the new project.
Now talk.
But speak a little louder.
Okay. Jim Boys. Where we're going on that is Jody, who I attended, and Mayor Kaufman, um, around table to ask for more funding. Uh, we've been caught in one of those construction phases where we've seen all the way to thirty-eight percent increase at the very top. Because the construction costs, and so we were caught in that cycle, we negotiated with our contractor with excess financing, we're ready to go, we will be having a pre-construction meeting at the end of this month with the contractor and start coming up with a timetable. And what this pertains to is replacement of the water end. And there's also a little bit of work we're gonna do, overhaul work on the water treatment plant, it's over twenty years old and that's the design life for many of the components. And so we're gonna go through and we're gonna change out all the software that operates it. Uh, we're gonna upgrade a lot of components and we're also gonna deal with, uh, chemical storage and we're gonna inject and save. It's missing also seismic components and so we're gonna do seismic upgrade on that as well, so we're gonna go through a great shake. Water mains up there that go out of the plant to a break, which would leave us in a much more dire predicament than we would if we had not completed this upgrades. So that'll be, that's on track, we're putting a lot of energy to that to make this project work.
So pre-con at the end of this month, when did the, did the contractor say when they're ready to mow or not?
No, usually the way it works is after a pre-construction meeting, they give us a very general calendar uh, about they're gonna start bringing in equipment, which they've already hit us up about storage, which we're fine about. Um, so they'll start mowing in equipment and, uh, we're gonna work with them to get new pumps ordered right on the front end of the project, we're seeing long lead times, I'm sure everybody here has experienced that if you bought any dry goods or any, any products, where you see the shelves there, um, let's say in the hardware stores or something like that, there's, it's tough to get components right now, that's the same in our industry. And so we're gonna get that stuff ordered, the day the contractor gets approval, we'll encourage them to order that because it could take nine months to a year to receive some of these products. But we work with them on that as far as warranties and scheduling, once we start these, uh, projects, there's a, there's a calendar that goes with it, that's developed by the engineer that says to complete this, it's gonna take, let's say, three hundred days. The clock starts ticking the day that they receive notice that they can begin. So within this, we've worked with the contractor to make them feel confident. They can meet that timeline and also to give them a little bit of grace if they're having a tough time doing problems.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Yep. Do that for me.
And for, for you new folks, um, now that things have gotten a little bit better, um, health-wise, um, we need to schedule a time to have you guys meet with, with Mr. Nudal and Mr. Madison and you can get a tour of the wastewater and the water treatment plants. It's actually quite interesting. So we need to get you scheduled to do that so you can see the infrastructure you're in charge of.
It's amazing to learn where it comes from and where it goes.
And you'll never wanna eat corn or tomatoes again after you talk to them.
And it's interesting, some people saying on, on social media that we were dumping a bunch of stuff on, and we're like, that isn't us, I signed the checks to her farms, ours is beautiful and dry when we're done.
That's the truth.
You could probably bag it and put it in the bird.
They're little biscuits, yes.
Not legally, but.
I tried that, we don't have all the components to complete that, it would cost the city approximately another half a million dollars, I tried, I tried, it's called a soil amendment. There's a way to pasteurize the products out of the water plant and turn it into a soil amendment, there's actually profit on the end of that, but we just don't have the correct amount of energy here, any natural gas to make it work, we don't have that as resources.
Well, we may have winter months, you never know. Thank you for your hard work, for always being so easy to talk to. Thank you, sir. Okay, what's next, the Counselor comments? Is this a good time to update any community? Get some update on that? If you haven't, so Counselor, I had someone to throw first.
Well, I submitted my, uh, top five, so.
That's the update.
Yeah, that's it. I moved outside of that.
Are you doing anything with childcare, maybe at work?
Uh, yes, sorry to interrupt you again. Yes, um, thank you. Working with the school district, they need to, uh, split up the boroughs and provide two hundred fifty thousand dollars to emergency funds for, uh, preschool services to help alleviate childcare issues in Gold Beach, so, um, so working with the district in mid-August level, um, landed a grant for two hundred fifty thousand dollars to offset the financial hardships for, um, folks needing childcare for their children to help them, um, offset some of the expenses there. And then just got a program going where we are funding the training and then incentives, financial incentives for completing the early childhood childcare education programs so that so we have a provider for community for childcare.
So program that.
Education, so it's through SWAC, um, early learning, SREL, or Course Investment Board, Weldon Community Foundation. Yeah, and it's, it's good work, um, because what we found is that I was on this mission to find a location for childcare. And I was struggling to find something that met the needs of childcare and cost. And we were like, all right, let's just support the in-home family childcare that exists currently and let's, um, expand the capacity by offsetting the cost for the education and also compensating that the five thousand dollars for attending, and it takes about six weeks, so I'm really excited. Because we've lost childcare, they helped get going, kind of going development, so, so we're gonna, yeah, that's all I thought, I think, the last one.
What was the amount he said? From the ARPA money? For the school or preschool?
It's two hundred fifty thousand.
Oh, that the same two fifty, or there's two two fifties?
There's two hundred fifty thousand from State Rep for preschool services. There's a different, uh, C D B G grant for two hundred fifty thousand dollars to help the families.
And the first was the ARPA money? And the second was what money?
Uh, C D B G.
Community development block grant.
And so that's a conjunction usually, yeah, I'm sorry, I kinda am, I was there, people look at it, I'm kinda.
That's a good.
In case you, one of the reasons that we have a workforce problem is we have a childcare problem. Counselor Madison in her day job is working on solving part of that problem.
Yeah, would people look to move here, I know that Main Street is real adamant that it's about what our downtown looks like, but one of the biggest is genuinely education, childcare, law enforcement, all of those things, you know, women, workers, economic development, those all quality. And look, we have the downturn off people have kids, like if you look at, like kid, people are not having kids like they used to, this generation coming up is like about themselves and so, um, just quick so far, so, so if we want to encourage and entice, you know, to build the workforce and have small families return here and, uh, bring the kids up in such a great community, we need to, um, pay attention to the needs and where we lack, you know, let's help build apps. So yeah, that's right, so if you are interested in expanding or growing the childcare, please let me know, it's all paid for. Thank you.
That's good to know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, you know.
And does that, let's see, is it for the whole county? Yeah.
Yep, and I've got, you'll see an ad about a, uh, we, it's on social media with the papers. I put it out, a half page or a little bit more. I put it in a bunch of places, oh, the radio. Everywhere I go, I did, so.
Okay, cause actually my, my daughter-in-law lives in Langley's.
Okay.
And that actually would be something really good.
It'd be awesome, it's on Thursdays for three hours. And it's flexible, it's remote, like we were, we were looking at literally every single barrier that would keep somebody from, from participating. So maybe six weeks on Thursdays, if there's any questions, I'm ready to call.
Okay.
Counselor Bradley, the things that I expected an update on is the fire consolidation. And then the other one.
Fire consolidation.
All right, did you need to follow up?
Yeah.
Let's call him on his phone. I think I had outside of that news, like I found myself with too much free time after two weeks of not on fire, yeah. Was offered a certain job to coach second team free football.
Who do you practice, you're Jim Boys?
Uh, that, that, that'll reach out to Chief Greer and see what's going on with fire consolidation.
Okay, I'm gonna check with Mr. Patch, he was reading that up, I think. Counselor Martinez, what's going on?
I uh, was to contribute in the moment.
Okay. Counselor Skinner?
Well, I had to, Counselor Madison laughed because in my notes at the very beginning of my notes for today's meeting, I have childcare question mark on my Counselor comment, so, thank you. That was really, right there in there. That actually came up in a conversation, I wanted to start out my Counselor comments with the fact that today Gold Beach did a very nice Fourth of July the show last night, thank you to the volunteer fire department, thank you to everybody, that was great. Jerry's did a great job, it was fun being in the stores and seeing the locals and, uh, uh, visitors all excited and being part of the community, that was really fun. But it came up because one of my family members was staying at an RV park and we were talking about long-term residence and childcare and work and housing and that cycle of.
Yeah.
So, and that was an awesome Fourth of July weekend and then I had put it on my list to every month say, oh, I know what it was, this coming weekend, we have the community cleanup at the playground and the party in the park, so make sure people are excited about that, it'll be fun. And then I put on my list every month to talk about conserving energy. Coming back to that, we have, as we're looking at renewable and all these different options, to come back to that message of what we can do, um, as individuals, to encourage, to do ourselves and everything to be considering what can we do to promote energy conservation.
Counselor Gilchrist? Jim Boys?
Well, okay, well, you said, you know, that the playgrounds, we can't get all ready for the theater, um, and I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. Um, it'll be interesting to see how many exhibits we actually get, um, after two years of not doing anything. This might be a year when we're, we don't have a lot for people to see, but maybe we can encourage them to come in next year and do bigger things. The theater is getting ready to do, um, a production for late summer. I fell on its nose, so we have another one coming up. That is now an audition. Uh, the theater has also acquired, um, a really interesting, ooh, visual, audiovisual piece of equipment that I'm not sure I understand anything I know about, um, but it will allow us to do so much more, um, and the goal, the vision of the president of the board is to bring in the children and to bring in theater for young people and so this piece of equipment will actually, if there are people that are long, will be able to do kids karaoke and, you know, fun things for young people and to bring in more children's theater. And that's something that the board is very interested in accomplishing, also interested in, uh, bringing in architecture, looking at our whole seating. looking at our whole seating, our whole front stage area, because it's a disaster, and, um, better seating, better, better lighting, better seating, better quality of participation for the audience. So all of these things are in the works, but I think the most important part of that is that encouraging children to stay with you for our community kiddos.
Thank you. I've done so many meetings, I can't keep them straight anymore. Meeting with housing folks and working on community actions take a lot of my time, but I think we're starting to right that ship. The new executive manager seems to understand what he's doing. We keep adding new board members that seem to be smarter than I am, which is awesome, and we can hopefully solve some of the issues, because without that agency, it really struggles with our, because that's the hub that tends to make a payout. Two-thirds of what we do is head start, and so I think it's an important organization to keep going, and, um, I'm going to keep short tonight. We're tired and want to go home, and I do notice that you're taking really good copies notes, and a lot of us just jot things down, just as a reminder, those are public documents and can be requested, um, so don't put "I hate somebody" on there.
Or if you do, scribble it out.
And just at some point, if anybody makes that request, you might not have it available. Alternatively, you can just hand it to Jody and say, "Here you go, recorder."
And you can keep them, I, I've not ever had anybody ask for notes, um, in, from meetings, I have had, had two requests over the years for emails regarding a particular topic, so, but I mean, just...
Okay, uh, did you have an update?
Not, not really.
Okay. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Bradley, sectioned by Councilor Gilbreath, I will call for the question. Councilor Bradley?
Aye.
Aye.
Madison? All right, unanimous, we are adjourned.